Alright guys, welcome back to another special edition, election edition of Meet Victoria with Caleb Shaw. Meet your candidates. This is a little cool thing we're doing. We were supposed to be hosting debates, but Mandy Lingo and Dr. De La Santos were having no part of that. So instead, we have asked the candidates that were willing to come in and talk about their platform and where they're at. And today, we're joined by District 3 City Council, running for, District 3 City Council candidate, Aaron Franco. First and foremost, thank you so much for coming in, man. It's a, I know the election process and running around isn't easy. It's a lot of time. You have a real job. You have all these things and I know this is a lot. And so first and foremost, thank you for putting yourself out there and being available and trying to serve and give back to your community. I appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, and so on that note, before we get going, this and all of our candidate interviews are sponsored by VCS, Victoria Communication Services, the Hartman family. Guys, if you don't know them by now, if you don't know VCS, that's your loss. They, they help and give back to so many different wonderful organizations, people, groups, everything in this town. Please go and support them. They will take care of all your needs out there. You need cell phones, they got you. Across the board, VCS, thank you so much for sponsoring this. On that note, let's get going. Aaron, my brother, tell me a little bit about yourself and who you are for those of us that don't know who you are.
Alright, well, like you said, my name is Aaron Franco. I was born and raised in Corpus Christi, Texas, and eventually made my way down here to Victoria. I moved here in September of 2019. It was completely unexpected. I never imagined myself living in Victoria. It was always in between whenever I would drive from Corpus to Houston where I spent about a year and a half working. And I ended up here thanks to work and I mean, I couldn't be more grateful. You know, just the city has really welcomed me. I always thought that Corpus was home and you know, I, I thought, alright, well, after being in Houston, I'm never gonna leave Corpus and this is the kind of vibe that I want to be around, you know, the small town feeling, but still has that, you know, big town vibes where there's still a lot to do. And I know people don't feel that way necessarily about Victoria, but when I moved here, you know, I immediately got involved in the community and I fell in love. Everybody made me feel like this was home. And that's extremely important to me, you know, feeling like I belong somewhere. And I mean, I'm just grateful for the opportunity to be here. Thank you for having me.
Yes, sir.
And you know, and really putting myself out there and running for city council. It was always a thought and a joke in my family that I would go into public service and I would always tell them, no, this wasn't for me. And somehow I talked it over with some friends and we thought, you know, this is the time to do it. Why not? You know, if it works out, that's fantastic. If not, you know, I got my voice heard and got involved.
Well, either way, I totally respect the fact that you tossed it, you know, because a lot of people like me, like you sit back and throw grenades and, and, you know, and lob our opinions out there, but I have no desire to go run for city council or school board or any of those things. And so I, I appreciate people that are willing to put their neck out there and do it. What's your, what's your day job? What do you do normally?
So I am the bank manager at Frost. I've been with the company for almost five years now. I absolutely love what I do. It's what brought me here. I get to meet people every day. And that's really what's important, meeting people and serving them and making their life better.
That's awesome. No, I certainly appreciate that. So I'm gonna get into some questions with you. What's unique about city council is, you know, you guys don't run under a Republican or Democrat platform. It's, it's just, this is me. You know, and, and I get that to a degree because I think when it was set up that way, I think it was probably because people, hey, these are your neighbors that you're going. What does it matter? Like vote for the person, which in theory I agree with totally. But I think kind of what's happened is, is, you know, we vote for our friend, we vote for whatever, and then we get up there and we find out like, whoa, they, they vote totally different than what I thought, or they align differently ideology wise and, and you know, so what I'm about to, I don't necessarily want to know if you're a Republican or Democrat, but I want to kind of fill out your ideology because I do think the things we end up voting on, on a state level, on the national level, they all trickle down to the local level where they matter the most anyway. And so I think it's kind of important to get a feel for how you may potentially handle things in the future. Not saying you're locked in or anything like that, but just to kind of get a, hey, does he drift left? Does he drift right? Just so, I think that's important to kind of understand which direction or through what prism you're looking at things. And because it may be different than mine, but where can we learn from each other and stuff? So on that note, you know, if you don't want to say Republican, Democrat, I'll ask you to this way. Do you believe in a smaller lean and mean type of government? Or do you believe in a growing government to better help the people and a government that grows to be able to provide more needs to the people? Or do you believe in more of a trim, smaller type of government?
Well, I kind of find myself in a middle ground there.
Okay.
Social issues are extremely important to me. I, you know, I was a victim of bullying. I, you know, I had struggles growing up myself. So those social issues have always been a real passion of mine because I feel like we, we need to focus on that for, for our future and our development. But at the same time, I feel like we need to make decisions that are gonna be a benefit for the entire country, not just individuals. So I kind of fall in a middle ground where I'm, yes, I lean left on social issues, but maybe I lean more right on finances.
Fiscal type things.
Those responsibilities. And maybe I don't think that we need to give everybody everything that they ask for, but you know, we gotta give and take.
Gotcha.
So I like to look at both sides. And before I make a decision, I want to be well informed. And you know, I've never been the type of person that votes straight down the ticket, you know? I want to really get to know my candidates and learn what their beliefs are because they're probably right, you know? I can have a difference of opinion, but if they're able to educate me on what their beliefs are and convince me that that's the right move, then I'm gonna go with that candidate.
Right.
I'm gonna pick the person.
So you're trying to seek truth versus a party affiliation or just automatic left or right, you know, what's the truth to this?
Absolutely. I mean, if you are willing to vote straight ticket, good for you, you know, it worked for some people. I like to look a little deeper and really hear people out because, you know, like you said, these are our neighbors. And I did the same thing with the presidential election, you know, I listened to my neighbors and my friends, you know, I heard both sides. I, you know, did my own fair share of research, but you know, at the end of the day, it's our decision to make. And you know, you gotta live with whatever decision that is, but I never want to go into a situation where I'm like, this is, I'm only gonna do this one thing. You know, I want to hear both sides. I want to hear what people have to say. Because like you said, you know, the decisions that we make for our state federal government, they trickle down. And we're the ones that are affected here. So we have to think about that when we're making those decisions.
Makes total sense. Now, my next question is, is I don't expect you to thoroughly be able to answer this because you're not a current member of city council. You don't have access to this. But regarding the city budget, from your limited exposure to it, and again, clarifying that you are not on there. Yeah, so you, you, you're not a part of the budget process. But from 30,000 feet, do you think there's areas of pork or fat in these, in the budget that could be trimmed? Or if you're not aware of it because you don't have access to it yet or anything like that, would you be willing to try to find areas that maybe could be trimmed down to lessen the burden on taxpayers?
Yeah, absolutely. And I mean, I'm not gonna lie, I'm not completely in the loop on what the budget is and how the spending is determined. But I think that everything needs to be looked at. And you know, that's one of the things that I am really priding myself on during this campaign is being a fresh set of eyes. You know, everybody that's serving council, yes, they've done a fantastic job and they've brought us to where we are now and they're leading us to the future. But sometimes you need that fresh set of eyes that's gonna look at something and say, hey, this doesn't seem right. And you know, the other thing that I, you know, I want to be a representative for our community and feel like they can come to me and speak with me about whatever's going on and there's not that divide anymore. You know, when, when someone sits in an office for a long time, there can be that separation of, well, I don't feel like I can talk to them. And I want everyone in our community to feel like they can talk to me and that I'll listen to them and hear their opinion. And you know, we can, we can move forward together. And you know, if there's room for adjustments, then absolutely, I think that we need to do that.
And that's one of the things that I think is neat and important about local politics is, is that availability. And, and being able, your neighbor, your constituent, being able to reach out to you and say, hey, man, I don't get this or I don't understand. Or here's my line of thought on this. Where am I going wrong? You know, and, and I, I think that's hugely important. And especially when both sides are seeking truth. And you know, and you may have one perspective, I may have another. But somewhere buried in there is, is the outcome we want. And I think it's important, you know, I think national politics have put such a wedge between people that we've forgotten that this can happen. And, and I don't think we're as far divided as what people say. I think we're actually a lot closer. And while you and I may disagree on how to get to an objective, we may still want the same objective. It's just how do we get there? And me going out and pointing fingers and calling you a bunch of names and all that, that doesn't solve anything. And, and we still have to be neighbors and we still have to be, you know, and all this. And so I think those points of availability and listening to people is huge because that's, oftentimes, that's our biggest complaint as a community member, as a taxpayer, is they're not listening to us. They're doing what they want to do, not what, you know, they are doing what they think is best for us, not what we think is best for us.
Everyone just wants to be heard.
Yes, sir.
And, and that's, that's where local politics is key. I mean, that's where you can be heard. You want your city council members to be a representative of you and, and your community. So I think listening is extremely important and you know, just being willing to hear their concerns. And if they think that, yeah, this budget needs some adjustments, then you know, okay, let's talk it out. Let's see what works, what doesn't. Let's go have a coffee and really get in depth with it and let me listen to your opinion.
Sounds, makes sense to me. So Victoria streets are always a hot item in, in here. And you know, we, the medians, we're not gonna get into much because that's not us, you know? So as much as people think that city council, I've seen all the Facebook posts where everybody's scorching city council for the, the Novero medians and the ones potentially coming on Houston Highway, it wasn't city council. They have like next to zero voice in that. I'm all for holding them accountable for good, bad decisions they make. But this one, I'm not a big fan of the medians either, but it wasn't the city council. But on that note, Texas, I mean, the streets are a huge issue here in Victoria. And, and this week, city council will be voting on amongst other things, House Bill 4183, which would allow the city to hold an election to impose a one cent per gallon tax hike on gasoline to be used for street construction, maintenance and policing. When I hear that initially as a fiscal conservative, I, I just hear another tax. And I hear, well, yeah, sure, it's just one cent now. They're gonna say it for this. It's never gonna go there. We're never gonna see it. Two things. One, you know, what are your thoughts on, on this House Bill 4183? And then secondly, why does Victoria not feel, and you may not have been here in fairness to you, and I just remembered that you, you're newer to this community. We've been dealing with the streets for a long time. And, and you know, and so this may not be a fair question to you and feel free to respond with that. But one, do you agree with this, this deal of House Bill 4183 of allowing the, the city to hold an election to possibly implement this? And then two, what are your thoughts on the streets and resolving that issue somehow?
So I think there are both some pros and cons to the House bill. I think, you know, adding a one cent tax to gasoline so that we can fix our streets could be a benefit if it's used the way that it's supposed to. And if we communicate with the public what is actually happening, I think that's the biggest key. You know, we, we want to see changes in our streets. We want improvements. And we may not notice them, but I think the, the problem with that is we're not noticing because no one's telling us. We're not being informed, hey, this is the project that we're doing, you know, come check it out. Come see the development in this project and how the roads are improving. And really differentiating between what is Tech Dot and what is the city. Because I know, I mean, I've gotten questions on my Facebook page asking about, you know, when you leave Novero and you turn on one of the, you know, the side roads, you know, there's a dropdown. What is that about? Well, Novero is a Tech Dot project and the side roads are ours. So when you put them together, you know, there's that clash of, is it working? Is it not? The streets are adjusting. And you know, just communicating with, with the public, what, what's going on? And what streets are ours? What streets are not ours? You know, where are we responsible for improvements and what we're doing? If we can do that, then I can see adding that one cent tax increase being a benefit. But if we can't, then why do we want to put that burden on our taxpayers? You know, we're, we're already experiencing hard times with this pandemic. Is right now the right time for this? Or is this something that we want to revisit in a couple of years and, and determine, okay, you know, we're, we're back on track. We're, we're seeing improvements. Maybe, maybe this is the time to do it. And really include that communication with, with our general public.
Gotcha. Fair enough. This is a, this next question is something that I'm going down the road of feeling like this may be a potential, I don't want to say solution because I, I just, I don't think a tax is ever the solution. I'm one of these taxationist theft type guys. I just, I, I feel that there's ways to do it without the government just kind of saying, give me your check. Yeah, I just, I don't like it, you know, and but one of the things I feel like I could hold my nose for would be a consumption tax versus property taxes, you know, because right now you, you have the property owners that carry the burden of most of the spending and the, and the revenue they need to do these things. And, and you know, while I understand that on paper compared to other locations, we may not, you know, I always say, well, we're not taxed as high as other locations. And this, well, honestly, I don't care, you know, because I don't live in other, I live here. And one of the things I see as a real estate broker is, no, we are taxed and people are, you know, buyers have reduced buying capability because they have to pay those taxes in advance and all that, so they can buy less. Sellers get less profit from their sale because so much goes to taxes. And a consumption tax, you know, one I don't like about a property tax is you never really own your house. You're renting it from the government to where you can pay off every penny of your house and it's done. And then you don't pay your property taxes and they're gonna come and say, thank you. And they're gonna take your, yeah, and they're gonna take your home, your home, you know, and under threat of force. And, but a consumption tax, what I like about that is if somebody chooses not to go buy something that day, their money still sits right there in their pocket. But if they do go buy some, everybody contributes equally, you know, and, and everybody, if they buy something, contributes. The only rule, you know, I, I've heard some, some pros and cons and I'm sure that both exist. That's what I lean towards is a consumption tax because I think it will provide some, I, I think in the long run, it'll actually give more money to the, the taxing entities to do what they need to do. But I also think it will give relief to property owners. One of the arguments I hear against it is it will cause, you know, if, if we have a, last year with COVID and, and all of the, all the businesses, well, it'll cause a recession and then government will get less. Okay, you know, I'm, I'm one of those, if, if we all took less and we all had to, well, then the government that represents us, then they can pull up their belt and tighten their belt also. I don't, I'm not one of these that think government always has to be whole while everybody else isn't. I believe that they're our community. They represent us. If we're falling back, they go with us. And we rise, they rise, but it's together. So that was a super long way for me to ask you. What are your thoughts on a consumption tax versus property taxes?
Well, I mean, speaking of property taxes, that's definitely something I looked into whenever I decided to, to build my home here. You know, is what can I afford and what am I gonna be paying in taxes? You know, that, that was one of the first things I had to look at. And that's a conversation I had with my parents. Okay, like, yes, this house may be in my budget, but realistically, is it? And I, I mean, I can see a benefit to having the consumption tax because then everybody contributing when they need to. And you know, the argument of is, is it gonna work long term if we have a fall like COVID happened? And you know, everyone's really struggling. But I think, you know, like you said, everybody should be on the same playing field. You know, if we're struggling, then everybody should, you know, our representatives should be in the same boat as we are. And you know, that's why we elect them, to be our voice, to have the same experiences as us. And I think that there's that separation. And I mean, I think we saw it a lot during COVID, especially with our business owners. A lot of business owners, you know, they sacrificed their bonuses, their incentive, their, you know, their paycheck to pay, you know, their employees. And I think, you know, we need to look at that and really consider that when we're, when we're looking at a, you know, a tax and what works and what doesn't is if we want to succeed, we gotta do it together. So I, I think that's, that's how we have to look at that.
Well, I think you're spot on with that. And that kind of leads me into, into two different areas is, is one along those, those property taxes line is, you know, as a real estate broker here and owning a real estate company here, you know, despite what we're told that everybody moves to town to only look at what school districts and this and that, well, that's usually down the list, you know? It's taxes. It's, it's those things that affect stuff. And you know, one of the, one of the things that I, I seem to, to see the most with, with all this is, you know, like I said, buyer's ability to buy is reduced because they have these high taxes. Sellers' profit is reduced. And, and Victoria as a whole, I think is overpriced. If I had a magic wand and could wave it, I would drop property values across the board because I think they're artificially high here. I think we get away with, with it because of our geographic location. We're two hours from everywhere. What are you gonna do? You know, and, and there's been times in our market when our house prices should have gone down. And somehow we just, we continue to go up. And so do the taxes to match. Do you feel that Victoria property owners, taxpayers are overtaxed, undertaxed or right in line?
I think that's definitely something that we need to look at because, I mean, you're right. You, you want to look at your taxes when you're buying a house. I mean, you, you want to look at your school districts, of course. I mean, the first thing that I looked at when buying my house was what is, what am I gonna be paying in taxes? Can I afford this? I mean, the second thing I looked at is, okay, what's in close proximity to me? You know, what, what resources do I have? You know, growing up in Corpus, I didn't have, we didn't have a whole lot of money. So we, we really utilized, you know, city functions, you know, the parks and playgrounds and we use those things. And I, I don't have a family now, but if I have a family, you know, I want to be somewhere where
Take your kid or something.
I can take my kids and they could take advantage of those resources that the city provides. I think, like I said, I think that's something we need to look at and we really need to evaluate Victoria. Because we aren't any other city. And you know, and I, I think a lot of cities do that where they're like, oh, well, our taxes are lower than Houston. Okay, well, we don't have the population of Houston. We don't have
Or the amenities.
Everything that Houston has to offer. Oh, well, we're not taxed as high as Corpus. Okay, well, we're not Corpus either. You know, we're Victoria. We need to look at, at us and we need to focus on our community and the people here and what our community can afford and you know, the benefits that we can offer our community. So I think that's something that we need to look at is our property taxes.
Gotcha. I know that this, you know, your vote will be just the same as my vote on what I'm about to ask you. That it doesn't matter any different that you may or may not potentially be on city council. But you know, talking about businesses and taxes and all this, V I S D has, you know, they've proposed a 156, I think, point eight million dollar bond or something. And me personally, I'm against it because I, I think that right now, kind of like you mentioned earlier with all these businesses that had to forego their growth, their bonuses, all that, just to keep the doors open. Just because of COVID wrecking havoc and, and doing what it did, you know, I just don't think there could be a worse time to come in and say, hey, guys, on top of that, we know you got your butts kicked. We know assessed values on property, especially residential's through the roof.
Yeah.
And on top of that, yeah, we want you to vote yes on this $156 million bond and really jack your taxes up even more. As a real estate broker, my personal opinion, I think it's a terrible idea. I think it's a, and that's being said, understanding that this is what they have to do. This is the, like, I get it. But what's frustrating to me is the one thing, the left, the right, everybody agrees on is the program, the funding for this and how the schools are set up, they're almost set up to fail, you know? And, and they're, they're set up like, I get that it sucks that they have to go to the, like, to do all these things to, to whatever. Well, we all agree on that. So instead of us fighting with each other over $156 million Band-Aid or what wall color we want to put up, I don't understand why we can't all join forces and say, look, we reject all this. Congressman Cloud, whoever, help us fix it. Like, help us actually institute real, what I feel like they're doing is dividing us and bribing us with our own money. And, and instead of, you know, the fact that we're all united and, yeah, this system sucks on how we're all doing this. So why don't we all just form together and say, why don't we fix the problem instead of throwing $156 million Band-Aid on it? Especially when we're still paying for all these other Band-Aids that we've, we've put on. So that was a really long way to ask you. What are your thoughts on V I S D's $156 million bond?
So I mean, I'd have to agree that the timing of it is probably not ideal. The, the one thing that I, I would have to say about the bond and, and I mean, I may be wrong. And, and I'm okay listening to both sides of the argument and I want to know what people's opinion is. But for me, I think that the bond is important because we, we all want Victoria to succeed. We want more businesses to come here. We are, I mean, we see it all the time on the news where they're like, oh, this, these are the top five restaurants that Victorians want to see here. And these are the top five businesses we want to see here. And everybody's saying, well, oh, we, we need this business. We need this, you know, park. We need a playground here. We need, you know, we need an amusement park here. But if we can't invest in ourselves, why, how can we expect a company to invest in us? And that's how I look at it. You know, our students are our future. You know, we, we want them in the workforce. We want them to succeed. We want to offer them different resources that they don't, they don't have right now. And you know, one of the things that comes out of the bond is that Strowman will have a STEM program. That's kind of a special thing for me. I graduated from a STEM program myself.
Can you explain a little bit more about what a STEM program is?
So a STEM program is science, technology, engineering and math. With that program, you're able to get, you know, exposure to engineering and robotics and aquatic science and marine biology. And you may not see that on a regular public school. I know that I wasn't expecting it when I was going to high school. That I was gonna be in a lab, you know, dissecting fish or going out on a boat and, you know, fishing and pulling parasites out of fish mouth. You know, these are all things that I wasn't expecting. I never imagined going on a camping retreat for a weekend and doing labs on the water to see, you know, how much pollution we have.
Right.
You know, one of the projects that I worked on my junior and senior year was partnering with a school in a different district. And we went out to an island and there were invasive species that were brought, you know, from another country that, you know, way before our time. We're figuring out, well, what can we do to improve our environment and get rid of these without damaging our, our community? So you know, it really allowed us to think outside of the bots instead of just going to school eight to four. And you know, science, history, you know, those are the only things you're gonna, yeah. You know, it, it allowed us to really think and, and you know, try new things and see what works, what didn't work. You know, my senior capstone project was to work on an engineer, I, I took an engineering class my senior year. And my capstone project was to come up with a program or a function that no one thought of. And you know, my really good friend in high school, his name was Eric, he was in a wheelchair. And we were both in band and we both tried out for drum major our senior year. And one of the first questions I was asked was, well, Eric, if you make it, how are you gonna get on the podium? And to me,
To find a way to put you on the podium?
I, I had never struggled with that myself. I, I just, you know, I had been drum major two years before that and I, you know, I tried out. I ran up the podium. I did whatever I needed. I had never considered that, you know, I was privileged in that way. So I dedicated my senior project to him and I, I worked with my engineering teacher and we, you know, we worked on a podium that had an automatic lifting mechanism. And you know, she was, you know, willing to take me to a different school district that had that podium style that I, I needed to look at for measurements to figure out what was gonna work, what I needed to tweak, where I needed to add motors. And I don't think I would have thought of that had I not been exposed to a STEM program. You know, I, I got to travel to NASA and compete in the state underwater robotics competition and be, see the, where the spaceship and where the astronauts, you know, train
Right.
underwater and how, you know, that works for them. And you know, it just, it really makes you think and why, I mean, I really feel like that program is important. And I know that the high schools just received grants to have a STEM program as well. And I think starting them at a young age in middle school really is setting them up for success. And one of the things that, you know, they focus on here in Victoria is we want to build stuff here and ship it somewhere else. So that, you know, we are successful as a city. But we can't have those plants if we don't have the people to work in them. And if we're preparing them at an early age in middle school and high school, we can tell those companies, hey, we have a STEM program here. You know, we are preparing our students to be in your, in your field of work. They're gonna be here. They can develop whatever you're needing and maybe come up with a better idea. You know, the kids here are smart. We need to let them have those experiences and really give them the opportunity to learn in a different way. So I think that's a really big, you know, milestone for them. My high school was considered the newest high school in Corpus. And we didn't have, you know, the nicest campus because, you know, we, we just couldn't afford it. And a bond that allowed us to have a new campus, you know, could have made those changes for us. We could have had nicer labs. We could have had, you know, a safer program or, you know, a safer school. You know, that, that's a big deal right now, I mean, with child safety and, you know, school shootings, we don't, you know, we don't want those things. And having a more secure campus really is investing in our future. And I think if we are able to, to do that, businesses will see that and say, hey, you know, they can invest in their future when they're struggling, you know, they just got through COVID. Maybe we should invest in that community as well.
Can you, and the STEM program sounds like that was some cool stuff you got to do. Is that something that can be implemented without having to build new, is it a, is it a program? Or is it tied to a building or both? Or say the bond crashed and burned, but, but hey,
Yeah.
I don't like the bond, but I like the STEM, the idea of that. Can we still implement and help V I S D get the STEM program without delivering a $156 million bond? Or do, do they have to go together?
I think it's kind of unique because they, they've tied the, the STEM program to Strowman. And I think they, they did that strategically because they know that the campus needs to be replaced.
Right.
It needs some improvements. But if we don't have the labs and the resources that the STEM program needs, the kids aren't gonna be successful.
Gotcha.
And that's, that's the biggest issue there. That, that's how I can see them being tied together. There are, I'm assuming there are ways that you can get it without building a new campus. I know my high school did it. You know, we, we changed things. Our labs got some improvements. We had small changes rather than an entire campus replacement. So I think that that, that's an opportunity. And maybe that's something we look at if the So I think that that's an opportunity, and maybe that's something we look at if the bond doesn't pass, and, you know, really allowing them to succeed in a STEM program without tacking on the tax burden to the community if it doesn't go through.
Because I think that would be a great sell to the community, say, we want to bring this STEM program. I don't think you'd face much opposition to that, but I agree, I think it was also strategic to try to use that as leverage to get the other one, when I think it could potentially end up costing them the opposite, because it's like, well, we would give you this, but now you've tied it to where I've got to give you a new building to get this. Well, no, I don't, you know, and, but now it almost feels strategic in nature, like they played one to get the other, you know what I mean? And so, but no, I hear you loud and clear on that, and I think you have, you bring up good points, you know. My next question is, you mentioned, you alluded to it earlier of using, you know, coming from lower income family, using city parks, stuff like that. I like those, I use the running trails, you know, I, we like to go down to Riverside and take my son down there, whatever, you know, we use the parking resources too. In the same breath, I struggle with, what is the role of government, you know? First and foremost, I think it's roads, bridges, and security. You know, I think those are the primary deals. I started getting into, you know, what is the, you know, when the city spends money and loses money on things like Boot Fest, splash pads, you know, stuff like that, like, I understand the quality of life improvements. I get that. I understand being able to say, we've got these splash pads, we've got, you know, we do Boot Fest every year. I get the feel-good of it, I understand that. But what I don't understand, and what I don't like, is losing half a million dollars every year of taxpayer money on Boot Fest on, yes, I know that part of these splash pads were given in a grant, and I'm thankful to those organizations and to those people that wanted to invest to give these things to the city. But then that leads me to, okay, well, I understand that this was given as a grant, but there's still these maintenance costs, there's still, the taxpayers end up still floating these different things. And so I guess my question for you is, what are your thoughts on the city spending and losing money on fun stuff like Boot Fest, splash pads, et cetera? You know, is it the role of the city to do these items, or should they stick more towards road, bridges, and security?
I agree, roads, bridges, and security is extremely important because safety of our community should be a top priority. And, you know, the little knowledge I do have of the budget right now, I know that the city of Victoria does take that into priority. They absolutely care about the safety of our community, which is fantastic. The counter to that is, if we don't invest in those parks and, you know, splash pads, I may not necessarily agree with Boot Fest, but, you know, the things that we see on a daily basis that our community can use, if we're not investing in that, you know, some people may not ever see the, may never see a playground with a splash pad, they may never be exposed to that. And we, as a community, should encourage that, and really, maybe instead of investing in Boot Fest and a festival, you know, we're investing in our playgrounds
More long-term type of thing.
Yeah, long-term, you know, success of our community. And I think our local government has a big part in that because if we're not paying attention, who's going to? And, you know, those are the things that increase livability. Our playgrounds are what people look at. You know, if we have a new baseball field where people can go and we can host tournaments for Little League, that brings people in from outside of Victoria that are going to utilize those parks, and, you know, they're going to, they're going to stay in a hotel, they're going to, you know, eat in our restaurants, shop in our mall. Those are the things that increase, you know, one, increase livability for our community, but it's going to help us economically. We're going to, we're going to start to see a trend going forward where, okay, we invested in, you know, this community baseball softball field, and, you know, now we have tournaments every weekend. You know, oh, we invested in this playground, and we added, you know, new tennis courts, well, now there's tennis tournaments happening there. I think that's how we need to look at it, and we need to, instead of just saying, oh, we're going to host a festival this weekend, and it's going to be fantastic, we're going to spend all this money, and then it flops. I think we really need to evaluate those types of events and, you know, determine, is this the right move for us, or can this be used to really invest somewhere else that we may not see results right now, but, you know, three, four, or five years down the road, we're going to see, okay, it's starting to pick up. I know, you know, some of my good friends live in Portland, and they just redid their, you know, community baseball softball fields. And they're like, man, you know, before, when, you know, we would see them right behind our house, and there was no one ever there. It's like, now, every weekend, there's tournaments, there's kids, there's people playing at the splash pads, they're actually utilizing those things that they've invested in that they weren't being done before, because now, you know, they are higher quality. They, you know, people are like, oh, I want to go there because I know that it's safe, and I know they have other amenities. They added a splash pad to the baseball field. So, you know, it offers a more broad variety of, you know, fun, and, you know, enhances, you know, why people want to go there.
And you make a lot of good points, and that's the struggle because, you know, as a fiscal conservative, I don't want the government spending one dollar more than it has to on something, you know, because I think if they take one dollar more than they absolutely have to, it's theft, you know, in my humble opinion, because you're, you're not paying for necessity, you're paying for a desire, what you think will be fun, or something. I would have a lot less of an issue with Boot Fest if Boot Fest was making money, you know, and I think this is a way that, and I'm not faulting the leadership, I'm not, but, you know, if these concert providers, if these other people that, entertainers, that host concerts, and so, if they're doing so because they're able to make money and do things, I feel like there has to be a way that Boot Fest could be a profitable thing instead of losing five hundred thousand. And if it's, if we're losing that money just to feel good, well, then, no, I don't, you know, whatever, but I agree in the sense it's like, ah, because I like the parks and stuff too, and it's like, you know, I'm not, you know, I, using the last school bond, for example, when they were going to redo the stadiums, everybody said, well, you know, we're not able to host these playoff games because our stadium is too old, and it's not to ADA compliance or whatever.
Yeah.
And if we build this new multi-million dollar stadium, you know, fifty million, whatever, then we can host these games, and we can charge for that, and we can make money. And so I started kind of digging around to ask how much that we actually make and all this, and we could, you know, eventually, but it would take like two hundred and sixty-nine years to pay back what it would cost to build that stadium, you know, and that's, that's one of the things that I do believe Victoria has different amenities if we would get out of our own weight, you know, and I would like to see, maybe instead of the city throwing Boot Fest and being responsible for that, well, they make it easy for entertainers to come in and book downtown and bring in a real art, and I think the community would like that as well.
Yeah.
And I really do commend that they're trying. It's easy to sit out here in the stands and throw rocks out, and you guys suck, you know, you, I get that, and so I'm trying to be fair in my analysis of it and assessment, and not knowing all the moving pieces, but I just, I, if we're losing money on it, we don't need to be doing it. It's kind of the way I look at it, and again, if they come out and they can, if we're making half a million every year on Boot Fest, then amp it up, do it, you know. I'm not opposed to the city doing some things if they're, if they're improving, you know, and a lot of times, I think we allow money to be wasted because it felt good, you know, and, yeah, I know we lost half a million dollars, but people were out there, and then, well, that's great, but I had to go to work for that money, you know, and that was time I didn't have with my family because that was tax dollars that I had to earn for you to take to put on a losing concert that I'm never going to go to, you know, and so, so yeah, I think you speak fair points on that.
And I mean, just to add to that, you know, if we just, you know, listen to what the community wants, you know, maybe we can make those changes, maybe this isn't something that the city needs to be fully invested in, but, you know, somebody else can partner with the city, and, you know, we can have Boot Fest because we want these activities. But we also need to listen to our community to see what they want. I think that's where we
And I didn't mean to cut you off, but our community also needs to be realistic in the sense of, I see a lot of, hey, what do you want? A roller coaster on top of a skyscraper with a water slide down the middle? And it's like, yeah, no, like
And that's a struggle, you know, we, when we do get asked what we want, everyone goes, I want all of these things, instead of saying, well, okay, if we're looking at Boot Fest, I would like to do this instead, or, you know, maybe we need to change the location of it, and if we change the location, maybe more people will go because there's less traffic.
Yeah, downtown, like, I want a vibrant downtown. I would love to downtown, for downtown to thrive, but I think downtown kind of sucks, and it's not organically set up to succeed, and, you know, I'm not going to go down this because we don't have time, but like, you know, I always hear downtown, well, let me back up, I always hear about downtown revitalization around elections, and, from about ten to twelve prominent property owners down there. Outside of the elections, I don't ever feel a sense of the community begging for downtown revitalization. I feel about eight to ten families that own property down there that beg for revitalization, and, again, I would love a vibrant downtown, but what I do oppose is the city putting their thumb on the scale to make down, you know, giving tax abatements, or giving, you know, incentives for people to build downtown. Well, now you're competing against me on the other side because I got none of those incentives to build, to do, there's no John Stockton Bower Main Street program to help me, there's no city programs out advertising my businesses on this side, and while I, again, I wish the utmost success to my friends, I have friends that own property down there, I have friends that own businesses down there.
Nothing against that.
And, yeah, I hope they crush it, but they need to crush it like the rest of us are crushing it on their own, and, you know, and if somebody goes and they choose to open a business in downtown and it fails because they didn't get the traffic count they needed, well, I'm sorry, and, but I don't think it's the job of us as a city to go bail them out, and so, like, I know myself and a lot of other people get frustrated when every election is downtown revitalization, yes, we're all for, well, you guys are for, the few politicians, and it sounds good, and the eight to ten property owners that are prominent names that push it along and keep it front and center, but it's, in my humble opinion, and when I feel like I have a decent pulse on the community, I don't feel a community demand for downtown revitalization. They would all be for it, in the sense of, again, thriving and being vibrant, but we're not Fredericksburg, and, you know, I always wondered why Houston Highway, for example, we have thousands upon thousands, not, not business highway, not main, you know, whatever, but the actual thoroughfare to Houston, why we never did something like what, you know, Sugar Land did, or whatever, because we have thousands of cars on a daily basis that pass through, but instead Victoria went industrial, we put up truck stops, you know, machine shops, all this kind of stuff, so people pass through, and it's not appealing, and we somehow think, well, that's going to make them want to exit and come to downtown Victoria, and well, no, no, it's not. And I don't understand why we don't focus our revitalization efforts on our main thoroughfare where we have the highest traffic count, where we, instead of trying to, what I feel is force a square peg of downtown revitalization into a round hole that has already moved, the free market has moved on from downtown. The free, like, that's why everything is growing away from that, because it sucks to drive, and I'm not saying that I'm okay with the city, if they want to do tax abatements, fine, give them to everybody. If it's good enough for them to get a tax abatement, it's good enough for me to get a tax abatement, you know, and, so, our final question, what are your thoughts on downtown revitalization? Are you for or against it? And just kind of what are your overall thoughts on that?
Well, I, I mean, I'm all for having an improved downtown and having that downtown experience where you can be like, oh, I want to go to downtown, and we're going to have all these things to do, because a downtown in any city is the soul of the city.
Yes, sir.
That's, you know, that's where people feel that sense of pride and that, you know, really historical, you know, feeling, when you go downtown, you're like, man, you know, this is where it all started. But I think we need to really think about, you know, what's actually happening down there. And the city's not expanding into downtown, we're expanding outside of it, especially in District Three. You know, District Three is growing, and there's really no, there hasn't been any focus on it. It's growing organically because our community is building houses, and we're opening businesses, and we have the main shopping area, but there's really nothing else that the city's doing for District Three and, you know, other districts that they're doing for downtown. And, yes, we all want a beautiful downtown, we want it to succeed, and I do too. I want to, you know, take friends when they come visit to downtown and say, you know, this is downtown Victoria, isn't it beautiful? But, you know, I think, you know, we need to look at what's working and what has worked in the future, in the past, and really see, okay, you know, we gave incentive for them to, you know, do a facade rebuild, and it didn't change anything. So that's, that didn't work. So we, maybe we shouldn't do that anymore. Let's, okay, let's try something else. And I really think it goes back to listening and hearing out everybody, not just, you know, a select group of people.
Good deal. Well, Aaron, thank you so much for coming in. Is there anything that I, that you want, that I didn't give you an opportunity to talk about, or anything, last-minute things that you wanted to get out that I may have glossed over or didn't give you a fair chance on?
Well, I just, you know, I want to say thank you.
Yes, sir.
You know, this campaign has been a whole learning experience for me, you know, you never think, oh, I'm going to run for office, and then I'm going to be in a pandemic at the same time. So I am learning what's working for me and what's not working for me, and I hope that, you know, I've proven myself to be worthy to be on city council, and, you know, I, like I said, I want to be a representative, so thank you for giving me a platform to be a representative for our community. And, you know, being in person, it does make a difference, having a real face-to-face conversation, kind of getting back to that, that normal, and, you know, we're neighbors, we can get through this.
Yes, sir.
We're going to struggle, and that's fine, but we're going to be the ones that push each other through.
Yes, sir.
So I just want to thank you again for the opportunity and
Likewise, likewise, it, you know, not everybody had the backbone to walk out and defend their platforms and stand on them, and you did, and I totally respect you for it, and I think you've done a great job, and win or lose, you know, consider me a friend, and again, thank you for wanting to invest back into your community, you know, I, like I've said a hundred times, I have no desire to do that, so I appreciate the ones that are, and I'm grateful to you, and, you know, and, you know, I encourage you, whether you win or lose, you know, especially if you do lose, keep it going, you know, and keep seeing, you know, you see them on the ups, and I'm happy for you, you know, and again, thank you for having the backbone and whatever to come in here, and I'm grateful.
Yeah, and just to add to that real quick, you know, you know, win or lose, I'm invested in this community, and that's something that, you know, Jeff Bachnight and I have talked about. You know, we've talked about, okay, whatever direction this election goes, it's not going to stop us from wanting our district and our city to succeed. We are willing to work with each other, we're able to have a conversation, we've had dinner together, we've had, you know, drinks together, and we talk, you know, we're willing to listen to each other, and I think that'll continue after the election.
And I think that's awesome, and it's been very refreshing to me to hear both of you, because when I talked to Mr. Bachnight, he said the same exact things about you. Both of you uplifted each other, there was no negativity, I mean, not one ounce of shade was thrown your way or vice versa, and I think you can highlight your differences and who you are in character without having to sling mud and do that stuff. And so, again, I commend you, and I commend both of you guys, like, you both run good campaigns and good elections, and I'm grateful to you. And so, on that note, guys, we're going to wrap up.